Thanks, Lee. A pledge to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rob, would you like to read the mission and vision statement?
Just me, I don't know. Mission statement: Graduating all students to be college and career-ready, challenging and inspiring and empowering them to be healthy and productive citizens. North Wasco is a premier school district. We provide students with a rigorous and relevant education with schools performing academically in the top 5% of the nation. Our students are inspired by a talented, innovative, and highly effective staff that values continuous professional growth. Our district graduates citizens who are ethical and motivated to achieve their limitless potential. North Wasco is fully embraced by the community reflecting its health and well-being.
Thank you. And now, I think we have a celebration.
Yes, we do. So, we have a few folks that are retiring. So, I would like to call forth any of these people that are in the room. If you're in the room, if you'd please just come forward. So, Anne Maslin from Mosher. How about Jane Ford? Did she make it tonight, Mrs. Jane? Kathy Gay. Norma Wrangler. Penny Wallace. So, Penny, thank you for coming. And Penny Wallace has been an anchor in the art department at the Dallas High School for over two decades. She currently teaches ceramics, three-dimensional art in yearbook, and has actively promoted student art throughout the school and the community. She's an active member of the local art community and a former board member with the Dallas Art Center. And she's going to be greatly missed. So, I have a little gift for you, just a little token of our appreciation. So, congratulations.
I also have a gift for you. Because I've just appreciated you so much. And I want to share something with you that you'll always remember what a great job you do. So, I made a mug and on the bottom of both of them, of all of them, John. You are right here. Some of you I know well, some of you I don't. But I wrote a word on the bottom of each one that reminds me of you. And a little kind of writing. So, as you use the mugs, enjoy them, John. And Cindy.
I'll make sure Cindy gets that.
I also have one for you. And Bethany, stay right here. So, I have a lot of fun. Michael is right here in my classroom. And Candy. So, enjoy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And Rob. So, continue.
Thank you so much. Okay, move on down the list. How about Tammy Springston? Vanessa Fortune. Angela Potter. So, Angela Potter has been working for, she started with the Chenoweth School District in 1993. She's been a secretary, a service learning coordinator. But her most prominent role has been her service to our students with special needs as an instructional assistant. And she was recognized as Chenoweth Education Citizen of the Year. She's been the Lions Club Educational Support Professional of the Year. And she has always been tremendously caring. She has a caring nature that comes through in her work with her students and with her fellow staff. She's the first to volunteer and to help out with any event. And a perfect example of this is how she volunteers to prepare a homemade meal for teachers during parent-teacher conference nights, which she has done the past eight years. So, we thank Angela for her years of dedication to our students and her coworkers. And Angela will truly be missed. And we will wish her the very best joy in joy-filled retirement. Bernadine Cannon. And Bernadine has been working in North Wasco and prior to that in the Chenoweth School District since 1996. And her school team has come to rely on her ability to not only work with others, but her great flexibility, her willingness to help out on others. She's been a tremendous part of the team. She's always willing to help and accommodate with staff requests. She's always there for everybody and tremendously caring. So, congratulations, Bernadine. And the other one that we have on the list, and I know he's not going to be here tonight, is Terri Stevens, who is our maintenance too here at the middle school. So, we're hoping things will go well for him. And we have a couple of our principals that are moving on. So, just would like to say thank you, Steven, for coming back to us. And we're going to really miss having you next year, but hopefully you'll be around. And then Sharon Bondarud, thank you so much for your service. So, at this time, we have some cake, but we also have cake or, let's see, cake tea, lemonade or water, and any combination thereof. And we have a poster for, is it a poster for Avid?
Yeah, bring it up.
Okay. And so, you want to explain what the poster's about so that they can put it up?
Sure. It's just a, it's a poster that our students, that you'll hear from in a little bit. But we, the students that couldn't be here got a chance to have their voice too, to say how Avid has helped them. And so, and you kind of have to get up close maybe to read it. So, it might be a good time for you to mingle and...
Okay. So, this is our time to kind of stand up. If you'd like some cake, come on over here. And Randy, you want to help me with this?
Somebody come and help out with this cake.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought.
Hopefully, you didn't record our conversation.
No, it's...
Can't talk about a student.
It's two trees for this work. It works, it's okay. Good, there you go.
All right.
Things are slow-moving. Trying to get that. And Dana can kind of... Yeah, I mean, I told them, yeah, we need to do whatever we can to keep this...
I don't feel... Do what I need to do and try and...
Yeah. There's always, there's always people upset. I mean, it...
Doing.
Good, yeah, good. So, I want to, I want to, I, you know...
About an hour later.
Are you really? How fun it is if we don't go to FaceTime. That's fun. I heard you on the phone and I was like, oh, I'll catch you later. If we could all...
Okay, we're going to reconvene, please. Too hard, we don't want to fly off of there.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. I think first resuming our agenda is Kylie with the school report. And we've got...
And Rob's up there now.
Nathan, great.
Don't want to mess with any of their hats over here. So, May has been kind of hectic, but like not at the same time. Like, it's just been kind of weird. All of our AP students have finished their exams, so all the stress is over. They're, in AP Bio, we're doing a kind of cool project with our elementary schools, where each of our lab groups have been making science lessons to teach to the elementary students. So, for example, mine and Nathan are like baking soda volcanoes. We're teaching them about magma and that kind of stuff. Juniors are finishing their state testing. One thousand, or not one thousand, $172,000 were awarded on scholarship night on May 14th. Girls districts are the 2019 district champs, which I know they haven't been for a long time. There's a girls' track.
You said, you said district.
Oh, girls tennis, not girls district. Sherrell, Sherrell or Forrest Shainton was the singles champ and went to state. And there was two other boys tennis players that went to state. The state track meet is this weekend in Eugene, and we have a variety of kids going, such as Samuel Alvarez was the 300, 3,000 meter state champ, or not state champ, district champ. Emma Mullins is going for the 800 meter. She's also the district champ for that. Justin Conklin is going for high jump, and he is the district champ for that. Emily Adams is going for long jump and was the district champ. We also have the girls four-by-100 race going and the boys four-by-400 relay race going. Prom was last weekend, and now all that's left is graduation, which is two weeks away.
And I'm just kind of here to, as a refresher from last time. And as I'm sure all of you know, on May 16, 2019, Governor Kate Brown passed House Bill 3427, otherwise known as Student Success Act. This bill allows Oregon to meet the quality education model with an added half of 1% tax on large businesses, granting the Education Department roughly $1 billion. So, yay. As I said, as you all know, I spoke to legislators lobbying for this change. And I want to come back and check in with all of you and make sure that this isn't the end for North Wasco County School District 21. I want to reiterate how important it is that these added funds get put to use. This bill is for students' education. And I have no doubt that you will all honor this request and really focus on the students' education and really just driving, driving home all we can do with all of this. And I just want to say thank you for giving me this platform to speak, allowing me to go to the state Capitol and speak on behalf of all of you guys. It was really an honor, and I look forward to seeing what this added budget brings for everyone.
Thanks for being such a good advocate. And Kylie, thanks for keeping us up to date all year.
You're welcome. And I want to say thank you to you guys, and I can't wait to see what next year brings. I will continue speaking next year until I graduate. So, we'll, I'll see you guys in September.
Okay, and now we have the Dallas High School Avid students, program update.
I'd like to invite up A.J. Rendell and introduce you to him and his role, and Susan Raffensperger and her role. And this is our, some of our first group that's going to graduate with Avid. So, A.J.'s going to speak a little bit about that.
And the juniors and teenagers, and we brought gifts for you as well. Oh, and we could pass, we could pass out this napkin. So, some of you have never, you don't know what Avid is. And so, this is a really millennial-style handout of the picture. Not a lot of sense. And show you the impact of Avid. This is a class of 2015. And I think if you look at it, you can kind of get the...
You're welcome.
Okay, Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. By the way, I'm Nick Nelson. I'm retired. I recommend it. A.J. Rendell, he is our site coordinator. He is an Avid elective teacher. He started with Kurt and I with the program about three, four years ago. And this is his group.
These guys over here, these are graduating seniors.
There's more.
There's, there's more. This is his group that he's worked with the last three years to this point of graduation. Avid is a nonprofit organization that changes lives, students' lives, by helping schools shift to a more equitable and student-centered approach. Avid trains about 80,000 educators annually with the idea of closing the achievement gap, which is high-stakes testing, the academic gap, which is classroom work GPA, and the opportunity gap. And that is for providing opportunities for kids who normally don't or aren't encouraged to take high-level, high-rigor courses like AP courses or honors courses or college-level courses with support. And why Avid? It's designed to prepare students for college and career, which is part of the board vision and goal statement, and life. And there'll be more than 7,000 schools at the end of this summer who rely on Avid to transform more than 2 million students each year. Okay? My compatriot on my left is Susan Raffensperger, and she's the ninth grade elective. I said it right.
You said it right.
Okay. Avid, in essence, is an array of instructional strategies and methodologies proven to have a high impact on student performance. About three years ago, Candy invited a group to come in from Midwest called the Mid-Continental Research and Education and Learning Think Tank, called McCrell for short. And the idea for this team was to look at our system of instruction and try to come up with some critical points that would help move the dial as far as student performance. After two years with McCrell, administrators and teachers came up with two targets or two goals. And one of those goals was to engage students in their learning. And the other one was to work with depth of knowledge. And this is right down Avid's wheelhouse, depth of knowledge and student engagement. And it's done through what's called WICOR. W stands for writing. I stands for inquiry. C stands for collaboration. O stands for organization. And R stands for reading. These two targets are extensively worked on by our Avid-trained teachers. There is also systematic professional learning opportunities that have been provided by in-house Avid-trained teachers this year. And we'll continue to expand that through ongoing summer institute training, which is going to be on your agenda a little bit later. We've been very, very blessed and fortunate to have landed the Measure 98 or High School Success Grant, which has really helped allowing us to double the number of people that we can get trained and send to training. We also, this, the high school's in its last year of the Nike grant, which we wrote a few years ago that helped fund, partially fund our training as well. We're happy also that this year, the middle school has a grade eight that we've launched. They have 23, 24, 25 kids that started out this school year. And those kids will migrate up into high school. And we're going to start next year another Avid elective class in grade seven. They were the recipients of a Miller grant, which funds for three years. So, we're happy and excited that we've got the opportunity to be a part of Avid and have an impact. Now, I'm going to turn it over to these two professionals.
So, I'm A.J. Rendell. I'm the site coordinator at the high school. And Nick kind of covered most of the big things with kind of the nuts and bolts of like the overall program. And we came, we've been a couple times. We came and talked a little bit about how the class works. The thing for me, I feel like in my short time as an educator, I feel like this is a very unique opportunity I've had. I've had the opportunity to spend three years with these students and some other students. And really, to be able to see their maturation and growth has been incredible. And I think day-to-day, it's definitely difficult. Like, you're like trying to do it like all the, there's tons of video, tons of resources to see like how it should look. There are national demonstration schools that you can go visit. And feeling like that doesn't look like my classroom was like, is a constant struggle. But hearing from other teachers, like talking about these students and how they perform compared to other students and like the thoughtfulness and the way they collaborate with each other. Kathy came in and did mock interviews with my Avid senior class. And like up until the day that those happened, we were incredibly nervous that they were going to just like... But we invited a bunch of other adult strangers in to interview them. And everybody walked away, I think, saying like, we would hire these people. They were so prepared, they're more prepared than adults. They were so prepared, they're more prepared than adults um that we have interviewed. So, I'm incredibly proud of this group of students. I've also had a unique opportunity to know these young ladies. When we first started, uh, Robert, actually both years, has taught his class in my classroom. So I had a pretty unique perspective to kind of see the inner workings of his class as well. And like, we've truly just kind of built a family and I think this is one way um students are really connecting with teachers and with um the school, so.
And I'll just add to that, that I, I have experience in the business community and I would say the professional development and the training that you get at Summer Institute, they also realize those teachers in your summer, so they kind of spoil us a little bit. But it's also the best professional development I've ever been to. And it, it makes you just excited to come back to work and get, and get into what you're doing. It takes the onus almost on, less of it on us to make them perform. We feel so much pressure to, to have them learn and, and you know, we're trying all of our things, but um this way, it, it looks messy. Sometimes you look in the classroom and they're talking and it looks chaotic, but if you really hear what they're talking about, they're talking about algebra. And they're talking about biology and they're fighting about it and they're debating about it, but, but we love it, it gets us excited. And so, um, you know, if you ever wanna see what, we do these things that are called tutorials where we have kids come from the, the community college and um they have been trained to be tutors and we, they're not tutors in the typical sense where it's collaborative. We're teaching them to do study groups like college where you would, everybody would be accountable to, to questions and, and having their materials done and ready. And so, it's, and again, it's not, everyone's right for college, but when, if anyone who wants to go will be ready and successful. Cause it's not just about getting in, it's also about staying in and finishing, so, um, but you should definitely hear from, from you guys.
So, I mean. So, remember about like.
Say your name, say your name.
My name is Elise Ferguson, I've been there three years, it's been great. Probably one of the biggest takeaways that I've had from Avid is definitely through like Ms. Rapp was saying, the tutorial sessions and those teamwork skills you learn and just problem solving in general, it's really kind of a new take to what normally happens in the classroom. There's no other people just solve the problem like, okay, here's the answer, but in these tutorial sessions, um, what happens is you have to help them solve the answer themselves, right? You can't just give it to them, so you ask questions and questions. And if they don't understand, you just help them along the way and you try to make it so that they can explain everything to you so that not only they understand, but you understand as well.
You should also maybe tell them where you're accepted to college.
Brooklyn University, I don't know.
Can I teach you an Avid clap? We do claps. Did I, did I do it? Okay, we'll, we'll start slow, we will, okay, it's a sparkler, okay, just a sparkler. So, come on, this is the sparkler, so, that's what we do, you know, but I mean, college, we do much bigger, but we don't wanna scare you, just yet.
Hey, well, I'm Casey Clausen, I recently got accepted into Southern Oregon University in Ashland. And I've also been in this class for three years since sophomore year. And yes, at first it was a little rough because we all thought we figured out how high school worked because we already had freshman year. But this actually helped a lot, cause now I think about it, changed a lot of my decisions, so I joined ASB this year. I actually took part tutoring the eighth graders and I was a tutor for them and I got to show them how it would help them in the future, even though they may not be planning college yet. But I explained how it helped me and how I felt a part of a family that actually could like help me get somewhere if I was stuck, especially.
So the eighth graders were running these tutorials as well, that it's pretty amazing to watch.
Yeah, so, it was, I mean, it was pretty cool being like an idol to them because I was like the person they'd always talk to. But also the fact that it really pushed me to do better in different things and really get myself out there. So like, I got to take a lot of different examples, so I got an interview with Gord Works, that was pretty cool. And then I, I mean, I did D Y W, but this class actually helped me a lot with my interview skills. And then I got to make t-shirts and I got to like get involved with the class and yeah, it's been all.
Yes, very awesome. Okay, we have to do another clap, okay, the bubble gum one. Three, three blows on the top, okay, ready, bubble gum, go. All right, okay, sir.
Well, my name's Anthony Zepia. Fun stuff we did, um, I don't know, I mean, all of it's fun, but.
You work hard, but you play hard, what's the coolest we have to go do? Like we all, the whole Avid of our.
Oh yeah, we have to go see the laser game. It's pretty awesome.
And college.
Also got a, you know, a tour of a PSU, so.
It was like, it was an Avid day, so all, there was kids that they can see that were from all over the state that were Avid and, very cool.
And uh, what, what, what Avid has really, really helped me with is uh note-taking. We, we take lots of notes, lots, lots of notes, and they're very specific.
And you feel like you passed the AP B I Ts.
Oh yeah, and also, I, when I started out in, uh, what was it, tenth grade? I wasn't too confident, like, oh yeah, I can take a B class, I'm like, no, I don't think I'm good enough. I don't, I mean, I don't think I have like, you know, motivation to do it. But after one year of Avid, I'm like, okay, I can take pretty good notes now, I'm gonna do it. I didn't do it till my, you know, senior year, but I feel like I fascinated me by it. Yeah, I feel like I did pretty good and they beat, they beat us, so.
So, this is it, wow, this is a new one, wow, this is a good one, wow, wow.
Oh, I'm Ketsa, I'm, I've not, I've actually been in Avid since middle school, I went to school in Gretchen. And I, I'm from here, but I came back and I've been in Avid since sophomore year. I think the biggest thing is just like the support, because obviously my parents didn't go to college. So, it's nice to feel that someone's gonna guide me, cause obviously they're not, they don't have the experience that someone else does. So, it's nice to know that I, because of this class, I know kinda what I wanna go into, where I wanna go, at least somewhat. So it's just nice having that support and knowing that they'll always guide me in the right direction.
So what are you thinking about doing?
Right now I have my.
I'm putting you on the spot.
Well, right now I have my heart set on psychology.
Okay, cool.
And hopefully I stick with it.
They could change too.
I know, I've heard that.
It's okay if you make changes.
Um, my name's Hannah Rodriguez, uh, Avid's really helped me with a lot of things. The tutorials are great, you know, when you first go into them, they're, they seem tedious and kinda stupid. But um after a while, like, the process really started to get to me. Like I started realizing like why we do the things we do and like how this helps me ask better questions. Like before I used to get stumped and then I'd give up or I'd just, I'd give up. And um, these tutorials helped me ask questions that would get me a step further and a step further and then I'd get to the answer. And I, I used to be able to do that before. And that really helped me like in my confidence when I went into classes. I felt like doing honors classes was like the highest I'd ever go, like, whoa, this is a lot. And um, I would really encourage me into getting into AP, which is crazy, cause I've, at this point, taken three AP tests now. And I felt pretty good on all of them, which I never thought I'd be able to say. Yeah, that's helped me a lot.
And um, these guys have all just, and stayed in it and, and we say we play hard and we work hard and um, it's, it's like a family. We say oh, and they feel like a place where they belong and can't go far. And you know, a class we get to apply for college in, pretty much, right?
One of the things that Anthony mentioned was the note-taking and um, I wanna share some stuff with you. After twenty minutes after an input, uh, the average person remembers about fifty-eight percent. This'll be, there'll be a quiz at the end of the course. After one hour, it's forty-four percent. After nine hours, it's thirty-five. After one day, it's thirty-three and it just kinda continues going downhill after that. However, what we're focusing in on at the, at the high school and at the middle school is note-taking and there's variety of ways to take notes. But the key thing is for the students and the teacher to go back through those notes. You know, we have two different methods, one is ten, twenty-four, seven. Every ten minutes, they'll stop and interact with their notes. Twenty-four hours later, they'll go back and visit their notes again and interact with them a second time. And then seven days later, they'll go back again and usually it's kind of timed out with, with quizzes or assessments that are on a weekly basis or a two-week basis. So, uh, th- there's power in the interactive, the, the student interacting with their notes. It's just not taking notes and forgetting them, putting them on the shelf until final and then trying to cram, right guys? So you guys are interacting with your notes and we're trying to build this culture where note-taking is of value in middle school and in high school and that carries on even into, it may not be college, but maybe a career. Uh, every one of us should be or has to have some form of notes to remind us of what we're supposed to be doing, you know, the next day, so.
Repetition, I think, is important for all adults and.
Exactly. So, um, with repetition, uh, and I'll give you this graph, it bumps back up after eighteen minutes. With a second repetition, it bumps back up almost to a hundred percent uh on one day. With seven days, if, if there's repetition or revisiting those notes, it bumps back up. It keeps that trend from going down in a, in a horizontal fashion. So, that's one of the, the meaty things with, with Avid that our kids are being skilled with. I think that's it, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I had a quick question because I, I'm still new and I'm trying to learn, so I thought that's part of asking questions. So, in relation to the Greater Dowls area um community, what percentage of students are in the program versus how many people are waiting to get into it? Just so we have kind of a sense of like how many people are we not able to cover, cause you might not have the capacity.
Good question. There's two parts to this program. One part you're seeing right here is the elective part. Students have to meet a certain criteria in order to qualify for that elective. They, they have to be first-gen kids, uh, um, their state testing has to be at a certain level or the GPA has to be a certain range.
And it's voluntary, they, they have to want to be in, we don't place kids in Avid.
Those are like a waitlist or.
There is, I mean, you can apply and get in, but um, you know, we want to create that voluntary, you know? Cause when you start a program, like these guys like literally had to take a jump and say, so I'm gonna do what now? I wanna do all this work and it's an elective and what, but they did the risk and it paid off. And that's what we try to say is take the risk, uh, you know, and in Portland, yes, there's meetings, there's parents are like, you know, lots of people want in and that's where we wanna be. We're, you know, right now, you know, I've got four new kids for next year that have applied and we'll keep recruiting and, and just make our program bigger and bigger that way.
So we recruit for the elective, we interview for the elective and they have to satisfy Avid's criteria. Now, the other part of the program is school-wide. School-wide is where you're gonna hear from Kurt a little bit later on, uh, where we have an opportunity through various funding sources to send our teachers to the Summer Institute training. This is where they will be skilled up in, in implementing these instructional strategies and methodologies that have an impact on all kids.
It's not just specific to Avid.
Correct. So, go ahead.
Oh, we're, we're looking at data today, that's like a big piece of it, we have to submit um data to Avid to like, say yes, we're following the guidelines. And we're looking, I think after this summer, there'll be sixty percent of the high school staff will have attended the Summer Institute at least once.
And it's about changing the culture at the school, when you walk in there, you know, there's college flags, there's Avid posters that say, you know, education opens doors and, you know, these messages, these positive messaging that is, is advancing everyone forward all over the school. And that's, it's supposed to trickle with, you know, the elective and of course, there's lots of kids that have other electives, right? Where all, everyone's trying to find a home and um, so, we're just, you know, I feel like Avid is really that middle ground kid that can sit in the back and kinda cruise through the seas and, and um, not really, but these things like get them to all, get to their potential.
Well, I guess, I'm just gonna clarify one more time, so, you know, is there a percentage that people, you know, students apply and they're still, you know, there's a capacity issue probably at some point, so.
We're, we're on, we're on the take, anybody, basically, we're, we have the capacity.
Okay, okay, that's what I was trying to get at, okay.
The, the key thing though for the elective is that they have to meet that criteria, cause that's what we get.
I just didn't know if they met the criteria and there's some point you said, we can't, there's too many.
Not yet, that's what we want though.
All right, good, that's what I wanna know, thank you.
Another piece of that is um, three years ago when we started, there was one elective class. And then last year, there were two, and then we expanded to all four. So it's still, it's still like n- new and emerging at the high school, so. And I would say, I was convincing these guys that it was worth it and they needed to stay in and I would say maybe these, the second-year class as well. And uh, Susan has like a, probably a waitlist of numbers of students. So, ideally, we will be, if we have that problem where kids are wanting to get in because the culture's shifting.
And I wish you could hear from the teachers, these guys, like senior teachers, that were saying the impact that they, the difference they've seen in these guys, so.
You know, I've, I've interacted with a number of them um over the last year too and I'm just, they're very, you know, they always come across as very self-possessed and confident and um, I, I have to use Ca- uh, Casey. You uh, I have to praise you because you could have stood up against any college student applying for the job that you did and you did a great job.
Very good. John, you have a question?
Yeah, so is there any kind of a bridge program to help the kids if they want, if they're intending to go to college to make that transition and is there, is part of Avid to support them once they're there?
Yeah, there, there is an Avid post-high school. We've been in communication this year with uh the National Director and then also with the college up here, CGCC. And the plan is eventually to open up an Avid elective class up there that will train students coming in to how to be tutors and then at the high school and, and then also spread that at the, at the post-high school level. So there, there is a plan for that and we have to, again, we have to follow, if we wanted to use Avid's brand, we have to follow their procedures. So we're working on that, that's probably two years maybe down the road or so.
I just heard today that CGCC is going to be a four-year college.
Excellent.
Is that correct?
It's, uh, they're, they're offering a four-year program for elementary, to become an elementary teacher. And so the, the two years are um CGCC and then the, the second two years are, are with Oregon State actually, so. But, but they don't have to leave the Downs.
Well, I just wanted to say one comment, just looking at the statistics on how this closes the achievement gap and since that's really a big goal for our district, um, it seems like, I mean, it would be fabulous to get all of our teachers trained in this and have it be accessible for more students, if, if we can see this kinda, kinda results here, yeah.
Hundred percent behind that one.
And a piece of this too is that it brings the businesses involved and I mean, they, you know, they'll, they'll pay for the, for Avid to promote and to, um, get involved, they want our workforce to be prepared as well. And um, so I think the more we can kind of get business and education to work together, uh, with that be.
Our other Avid elective teacher is Robert. Clark, sorry. He can't be here tonight because he's got a newbie?
And he's teaching a class.
Teaching, okay. Anyway, and then, okay, and then uh, I think the pla- uh, the plans for next year, Susan will have grade nine. Olivia Martinez will have grade ten and uh, and then Robert will walk his class up to grade twelve, right?
Yep.
Okay, elective one out, grade eleven.
Nate.
Nate, yeah.
We got it, we got it covered.
Thank you. So we've got all four teachers, all four elective teachers that are gonna be either trained this summer or they will be going to emergency training in October, pathways, pathway training that Avid offers yearly.
And we welcome you to come into the classroom anytime, these guys are used to people coming in and, right, you show your binders off, yeah?
Thank you all very much for opening up.
Okay, we want to comment from the audience and we do have some uh guidelines for that and rules. Speakers may offer objective criticism. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints regarding any individual district staff member. The board chair, which is me, will direct the visitor to the procedures, well, and the policy regarding complaints, if there are any of those. Also, commendations should also be sent, involving a staff member should be sent through the superintendent, who will forward it to the employee and his or her supervisor and the board. Non-agenda items to be discussed will be limited to three minutes. So we have several people signed up to speak tonight. Mary Tyree?
And Whitney.
And Whitney? Oh, together, yeah.
We're promoting.
Excellent.
So, we're here to talk to you about our Bike Night. This is our second annual one. Last year, it was more focused around Tenement Elementary, but this year, it's community-based. And so we want as many people as we can to show up with the bikes they have. And, you know, be part of our rodeo. We have a bike decorating station and the stunts and bumps. They're making little ramps and all stuff that people might go through and go on. The egg drop and helmet safety, so they can see why you should be wearing that helmet. A slow race, they'll ride the line, and then the police are gonna come and do the rules of the road with them. And hopefully, the fire department will be able to be there this year and do helmets. Last year, there was a fire.
Priorities.
But, and then at the end, we're gonna do a little parade. At five-thirty, we're gonna raffle off bikes to kids who don't have them. So they can go and kind of see which one they want, which one would fit them. They put their name in the little envelope on the bike, and they hope that they get the bikes. So the more bikes that we have, the more kids get bikes. So, if you want to take this and run with it, we'd be very appreciative. If we could get the word out more, because the more kids that we can touch, the better. Right? Bring us together on something that's fun with, Josh Cox is doing the music.
Yeah, we have music. We're gonna have taco trucks.
And shirts and.
Shirts and decorating.
And so with, with, well, Bethany and Candy work together to get some of the grant money so that we can really make this event amazing.
So we hope to see you guys all there. We will be delivering flyers to the other elementary schools. The bikes are, we're raffling off bikes, and the majority of them are for twelve and under. After last year, we learned some things, so we changed some things.
As we always do.
Yeah, so, elementary principals, please be on the lookout. And we are welcome to volunteers because this is a really big event. So, if you're interested, please let us know. We'd be happy to get you on the list.
And if you know how to change a tire or fix a chain, because we'll do minor repairs. For, we have volunteers from bike shops that are gonna do minor repairs. And then, if it's a major repair, they're gonna get like a card. And the business said that they would give them a discount when they come in to fix it, so.
Yeah, great, great. Any questions?
Can I have about ten, twelve more of those who will be on the list?
Yes. And bike donations, are you guys still looking for bike donations?
Yes, ma'am.
Gently-used bikes, where can we drop them off or let them?
You can just bring them right to Tenement. If you have a bike or you know somebody that has a bike, you can just bring them to Tenement. And we'll be waiting for you. We have staff that are adopting bikes. So if it's like a little, a little rough around the edges, a staff member has adopted the bike, and they're gonna make it nice and beautiful, it's boosted up a bit. So if you'd like to adopt a bike, we have bikes, so. Or you know somebody who would like to, so.
It's a nice kickoff for summer.
Yeah.
Great, great.
Do you guys have any questions for us right now about it?
Thank you. It's just a great idea.
Come out, everybody.
Yeah, comments are gonna be great.
Thank you. Okay, we have John Frederick.
Hello again. I think I know most of you. First off, I'm here as myself. I am president of the High School Booster Club. And what I would say tonight is my own, it's nothing, has nothing to do with. They don't even know I'm here. There's been so many positive things that have happened and are currently happening in our school district. And you have the staff and volunteers to thank for it. For the past two years, since the arrival of athletic director Matt Morgan, his leadership has made, has made progress moving our athletic program forward. It hasn't been easy. We've had some setbacks. However, we continue to move forward. Matt is an asset to our school district and community. He is among the best ADs I've worked with in my forty-five years involved in high school sports.
Kind of migrating into that territory.
I'm praising your athletic director.
I know.
Commendations as well as.
Okay. Okay, as we progressed through the year, I really thought we had turned the corner. Then we reared, then the past reared its ugly head Monday night at our last booster club meeting, which then turned into a three-hour marathon, with some actually getting up and leaving. One of the goals two years ago, our booster club was to create a Riverhawk Athletic Hall of Fame to honor past athletes, coaches, community members that made a difference in our athletic community. That included both the Dells High School and Watanaka High School. In the past year, we formed a committee, which was a cross-section of our community. They met, established criteria, and proceeded to select the first inductees. Then made their selections that have been honored. And by the way, that's gonna be, the first Riverhawk Hall of Fame is gonna be at the Dell Civic on Saturday, September fourteenth, starting at six o'clock. And those selected were revealed to the board at that meeting. The discussion that followed was very disheartening. I'm still beside myself. And talking with Matt the following day, he was pretty, and I'm glad Matt did what he did. He wrote an email to all of us later saying, "This is the way it's gonna be." Congratulations to Matt. I share this with you for only one reason, that after the failed levy vote result, vote that results and the current discussions you're attempting to have as we move forward, I believe the main issue is not being addressed. We have a very generous community. The support of individuals and businesses in our community for our booster club attests to that. Nobody can deny that we don't need to address our facilities. The hurt and mistrust in our community has very deep roots and needs to be healed before we can move on. Having more building committee meetings and talking with architects is not gonna solve our problem. You cannot heal in the same environment that made us sick. We need to have an open, honest discussion with our community facilitated by a firm specializing in just that, rebuilding community trust in school districts. Seven years ago this month, as a board member sitting on this board, I made a presentation to our board regarding the strategic planning process. That process will require our community to engage in a healing process. This is the fourth time I've been in front of the board asking you to consider this process. Please look outside the box and please don't go back down the same path. Thank you.
All right, Tom, you're with an agenda item, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right. Moving on to consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes and personnel notes? Someone try to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will, sir.
All right, we've been seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
I abstain.
You abstained?
Because I wasn't here, so I don't.
Very good.
I mean, I read the minutes.
Very good, okay. Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Presentations and reports, superintendent's report?
Yes, I'd like to do an update tonight, first of all, on what was the Student Success Act, which now is moving towards being the student investment account. As the, as this moves towards implementation, I want to remind the board that a few months ago, we presented what we would do in North Wasco County School District, should we be able to have that additional investment in schools. And as you remember, they have the four buckets, which are the smaller class sizes, well-rounded education, student health and safety, and more learning time are the areas. And for us, in working with our staff, getting input from our staff and administration, we came up with wanting to invest in all of those areas. At that time, we had a projection of being able to have, our district would be receiving about $2.5 million. At that time, we thought it would be during the 2019, 2020 school year. We've since found that that's not the way it's going to roll out. We won't be receiving money this 1920 school year. But beyond that, we will start to, to have the dollars to invest. And I want to remind the board that the areas that we chose as a district to begin with, in general terms, in terms of smaller class size, that's one of our highest priorities in terms of teaching is to reduce class size. However, we understand that due to our facility constraints, that that just simply isn't possible in most of our buildings. So, our strategy is going to be to increase the number of high-quality support staff that exist in our bill, in our classrooms and in our buildings. And so that, that means additional counselors, that means additional instructional assistants, those kinds of folks that can help us, although we can't, you know, we can't create additional classrooms, we can certainly do a better job of supporting the ones that we have. Well-rounded education, we said that we would expand Avid, advancement via individual determination. We already are moving towards the middle school. We want to expand it all the way into the elementary school. We want to strengthen our instructional strategies to help close that achievement gap that we continue to struggle with. And we want to increase ongoing professional growth opportunities and support our teachers that are doing their very best to provide as many opportunities as possible to our students. Under student health and safety, we want to create a middle school wellness center for students needing additional social-emotional supports. And we're looking to provide at least in our district, one school resource officer to be shared between the middle and the high school. And to also provide additional professional development for our teachers. More learning time, we want to increase after-school programming and close the opportunity gap by providing summer bridge programs for our students that are transitioning from elementary to middle, or well, from kindergarten, from preschool to kindergarten, from elementary to middle, and from middle to high and from high school onto either career or college to get those really needed summer hours and additional supports for students that need it. So, in terms of what I've heard so far from our state, based on the current projections and the Oregon kicker, current kicker law, approximately $1.4 billion will be returned to individual taxpayers in the form of a kicker credit on their personal income taxes in 2020. The corporate kicker grew to an unprecedented level. And so now we have that money, the corporate kicker is set aside for schools, and it must be dedicated to K-12 spending in the 1920 to '21 biennium, which means that when we budgeted, what we budgeted for will be solid for this next year. So that's really good news. Most importantly, this forecast is now helping finalize the legislative budget. We're continuing at the state level to work on ways to pay down the pers liability. That continues to be moving forward. I believe they are coming up with some pretty good ideas that will be able to help us in that area. As far as the school investment account, when fully phased in during the 2021 to '23 biennium, the tax proposal will net $2 billion plus in new revenue per biennium. That's a billion dollars that will be appropriated to equity-focused student investment account, the kinds of things that I was just talking about. And allocated directly to schools for student social-emotional health and safety, well-rounded educational opportunities, smaller class size, more learning time. The remaining funds will pay for early learning investments, school meals. And with that on the school meals, the current legislation that is, has moved through will actually help us. We were right on the edge of not being able to provide free meals for all students as we've been able to in K-8. And we're hanging in there one more year with the reality that we will qualify to continue on beyond that with this particular bill going into place. So that's really good news for our district. Also, full funding for Measure 98. You heard Nick talk about Measure 98 helping us get Avid in place. Measure 98 will also help us get many more career and technical programs in place, not only at our high school, but also at our middle school as well as we start to move forward. There are going to be more resources for high-cost disabilities. There's also going to be full funding for early intervention and early childhood special education. So, that's all really good news for us. It's out there a ways, but, and I don't doubt that it'll probably, the revenue package will probably face a voter challenge most likely in January. But should it prevail, it's by far the biggest investment in education, especially K-12 education in this state since before 1990. So, just wanted to share a little update on that. And then the other piece I wanted to, as they were talking about Avid, I was thinking about what you have in your packet for Oregon School Boards Association. And there's an application for the Promise Scholarship Program. And there's a bit of a carrot that comes along with it. If you do, if our board decides to go this direction and you participate in this, there's the possibility that we would either receive $2,500 or a $5,000 scholarship next year to go to a student in our, to be distributed among students in our district. But more than that, especially since we have so many board members that have not, in fact, I think we'll be to a point where none of our board members will have been through the lighthouse. John, you were right at, towards the end of the lighthouse training.
Two years.
So, okay, so, only one board member that's been through the lighthouse training. This is the new version of that, helping boards come together around, really, the collaborative and the distributive leadership team. And so I'm hoping you've had a chance to take a look at it. My recommendation would be that we apply for the full program next year. It's not as in-depth as what the lighthouse training, we actually went through lighthouse training for multiple years. This is a one-year. It is a big commitment. It does have to be beyond the regular meetings. So they, these are standalone special meetings of approximately three hours each. But I believe what comes out of that is extremely strong leadership and an understanding of how to function as a board for our district. And I think that's critical as you move forward. And talking to Renee Sessler at Oregon School Boards Association, she understands that, you know, with whatever changes happen, as at that point, we didn't know what kind of turnover we would have for our board as of July one. But she said if the board will adopt this, and then Kathy, you and I would need to complete the application and get it in by June first. If we'll go ahead and complete the application, they won't hold it to us should the new board, so to speak, in July say that they don't want to move forward with that. But given that we have a number of folks on the board that are, you know, elected and coming back, my hope is that this will be a commitment for this school board and something well worth going through. It'll give you the opportunity this next year to test a lot of things. You'll start with, they've got a new online tool for doing board self-evaluation. And you will also go through a process with me. Part of the requirement of fulfilling this is to do superintendent evaluation. I think this would be a great year for you to do a good evaluation of me and be prepared for whoever comes into my seat the following year. So, I would highly recommend this, but it's up to you. You'd have to take action tonight in order to, for us to apply. Because that's one of the requirements the board has to commit to it.
Any questions, Ken?
I'll just make a statement that my training that I received the two years, which is a little bit different than this, meant, made all the difference for me in my understanding of what being on a school board is all about. It's different than other kinds of boards, for sure. And it's, and I look forward to it personally. for sure. And it's, and I look forward to it personally, just for a refresher, because you tend to like, kind of forget a few things after several years. So, I think it's well worthwhile.
I just think that given that we have an upcoming superintendent search, I think it would be a goodwill gesture if our board moved forward on this, simply because it's showing a commitment to being the best possible board that we can be.
With that statement, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we move forward with making the scholarship application as presented.
Okay. Moving second. Any discussion, deliberation? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
I'm abstaining because I'm not going to be here.
Ballot carries, five ayes and one abstention. Thank you. All right.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Chief Financial Officer's report, Mr. Henry?
My computer died, so I can't see the financials. But I was curious that the enrollment graph had a deeper dip, as you probably noticed in the picture, but it's going to look like every other graph when we get finally done. It's a little bit odd the way they always work out. The other one is, I was just talking to my staff and said, okay, we got like 38 days before the year gets over. I said, what? He said, yeah, we gotta get ready for year end. Already? You know, and that's, they do go by pretty fast. And so, we're already gearing up for year end. There is another item I'd like to bring up to the board. About 20 months ago, we were invited to participate in a meeting with other landowners. Columbia Medical Center is interested in building a new hospital. And initially, their plans were to reconstruct in place, and they have since changed their minds. So, we spent more than a year examining options, Columbia View Heights being one of them, to relocate the medical center and some of its surrounding office buildings and clinics. Ultimately, Columbia View Heights turned out to be the best choice. And so, we've been approached by the hospital. They would like to obtain an option to buy 30 acres of the Columbia View Heights. It is zoned, low-density residential. So, I went and met with the county planning director to say, what do I do? And he said it's generally not an issue for medical facilities to be in that zone and/or a community overlay. So, in my mind, I think we're at a unique place to help determine what healthcare facilities look like in this community for many years to come. I have asked a realtor to give us a broker's opinion of value, which is, I guess, an unofficial appraisal. I have to get some estimate of value, and I have not heard back from them. But if this is something the board would like to entertain, I think if you would direct us to work with Jason and develop an option to bring back to the next meeting. So, the hospital's anxious to secure some, have the option to secure some ground so they can move on with their financing. And I don't want to speak for their board, but their chairman is here. So, I don't believe I've misspoken. Yeah. So, again, I think in terms of an opportunity for us to use some land that is surplus to us to ensure the continuation of quality healthcare in this community, I think it's, I personally think it's a good idea. So, at the board's direction, and no action item, just consent, I'd like to pursue and bring back to you an option to offer to the hospital.
Can I just say that one of the advantages of this is the infrastructure that we don't have to this property right now.
Well, and it would be sold undeveloped.
Right.
But once somebody takes the first bite of the apple and develops it, we would certainly be able to share in that. As we, as you recall, we retained the lower 30 acres nearest the auction yard for a future school site. They're more interested in the upper 30 acres, which still leaves 40 acres for some sort of development in the middle. And I haven't gone there yet. But, so this, if, I didn't want to survey it and lay it out and get it appraised. I just need to bracket the value to see what fair value is. So, that's what I'd like to bring back to the board at the next meeting.
Did you go to the city or the county plan?
I went to both.
Oh, okay. Who, is it in the city or in the county?
It's entirely in the city limits.
Okay.
It's entirely in the city limits and outside of the scenic area. So...
The auction yard is in the scenic area, is that correct?
Correct. So, and I should have a number in a day or so that the realtor is out of town. But I think it's, I think it's an exciting opportunity. So, Rebecca.
Just because I haven't been on the board very long, how long have we owned this property? And how long have we been trying to sell it?
I don't think we, I think we acquired it in the early 90s.
Or trying to surplus it.
Yeah, it's been surplus, not that long, perhaps a year. It was in the mix years ago before they built this building as a site. Since it's been, well, it was a weed patch. Now, it's at least pasture for a while.
Yeah.
And we've, it's part of the leases, Jason knows, they fenced it and keep the weeds down and the grass down, so we don't have fire hazard.
But in that year of being offered for surplus, we have not been approached by anybody else seriously, right?
We have, I have been approached a couple of times, like, we'd like to represent, we'd like to be your agent with a developer. We haven't put out an RFP for an agency relationship with anyone yet. So, and we wouldn't for this either.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's the next step.
Yeah.
But it's, in my view, if we develop part of it, the other piece just gets more valuable every single day. And more useful. So, with consensus, I'd like to bring an option back to the board at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
All right, I guess we're off to the agenda. Thank you very much.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right. Attorney's report?
Speaking of Columbia View Heights, we have received back the lease for the pasturing of the animals up there. We'll, I'll get that to Kathy for her signature. And also, we have the Columbia Children's Council lease back for the portion of Watanaka campus that they're renting on a year-year basis. And that just needs your signature as well. Their board has approved it, I think we approved it at the last board meeting, and I just need, I just need your signature on this.
Okay, yep.
That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Action item, equipment and materials use request. Who's in charge of that?
So, actually, I know about it, but as far as this piece came in, and the Charle Promotions is asking to use our district bleachers for rodeo in Dallesport, very similar request to what we've approved the last few years for the drag races, in terms of, I can't see anything different in this one than what we've approved. So, I'm just bringing that up. It's a board decision, but I don't see any difference.
I did have one question, but reading this over again raised, do we have a check-in process for the equipments?
Yes. Don, for our bleachers, do we have a check-in process? Yes.
You do with the person who's rented them?
Yes, exactly. You gotta check in and then, or check out and then check back. For two of the three, remember, we only lend out two, because one is not quite so friendly to move.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that's, I hadn't heard that, don't recall hearing that before. So, okay.
I have a question. So, I read the conditions of use, and it says that Charle should provide proof liability insurance for $2 million if in Oregon and $3 million if in Washington. Are they from Oregon or Washington?
I believe they're, I believe they're from Washington.
And the equipment's going to Washington.
The equipment's going to Washington.
So, it's the $3 million for the...
Yeah.
But they, it seems to me that they only have $2 million on their aggregate limit if you look at the specific health insurance services. They don't have three, they have two.
So, that would be a condition that they would have to meet prior to, so, you know...
Do they know that, or I mean?
They will know it. If you approve it.
We'll mention that as well.
Catch, John. All right, any other questions of Candy or Dawn? All right. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve it with the condition that they come back with a $3 million certificate and insurance for liability.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Moving second. Any further discussion, deliberation? This has been an issue that, you know, lending of school equipment has been an issue that we've debated for new people, fairly new people on the board, that we've deliberated on a number of times that has resulted in the, in the policy that we have here. You know, we routinely lend out our buildings for activities in the community. We also, and we do lend out this particular piece of equipment at the lease, which can result in wear and tear. And so, one of the things we've discussed on a number of policy we have now, but as a soon-to-be newly constituted board, you may want to reexamine that policy and see if there are other guidelines that you want to include.
And I can, I could speak up for that. In the past, for most of the years, it was at my discretion as to whether, the superintendent, whoever sits in my chair, their discretion as to whether we lent out equipment. I did not want our bleachers because they, you know, I mean, they're portable. They say they're portable, but they're really, as we've already found, we've got one section that it's pretty easy to get it to the point where you can't move it around. And it's very important for us to have it on one side of the district for our football games, and then we need it for graduation. And so, we get quite a bit of use out of them. So, it was decided that if the board wanted to do that, and as a community piece, which they did, it was decided that you needed to change your policy. And as long as I was sitting in the seat, it was fine with me if you wanted to take on that responsibility. But as long as I'm in the seat, if you put it back to me, I would tell you again, I don't think it's a good idea. But, you know, you might get somebody in here after me that just thinks that's a great idea. So, it's whatever you want to do. But it was a policy that used to be at the superintendent's discretion.
Is there any charge for that, or you just, they let, borrow it?
Correct.
So, they're just furnishing insurance, but there's no, like, wear and tear charge?
Yep.
So, we'll get it back worn and torn, but, you know, not with an insurance claim. So, we're not being compensated for any wear and tear.
That's concerning.
I think the idea was that they were purchased with community funds.
Taxpayer dollars and, you know, so...
They have to be replaced initially.
Yeah, yeah. But, yeah, that's...
If you don't build in money to fix things and maintain them, you know...
They were also purchased for the purpose of providing a venue for the school and its students' use. So...
I think we need to find, come up with some kind of way to find out that there are alternatives to create an alternative to using school facilities, like finding some bleachers that the public can own, for some organization.
There are rental agencies that rent bleachers.
Well, but not in this area.
Nope.
And so, it is problematic. I understand the community side of it from my side of it and trying to manage and have oversight of things that we don't have a lot of money to replace. I tend to be a little more conservative. So, but it's up to the board.
So, we could implement a policy that...
Absolutely.
Institute some sort of charge for wear and tear.
You could, yeah. Yeah, you could, yeah.
Is there, and Dawn, just for indication's sake, with this check-in, check-out process, let's just say they return it in very poor condition, is there any recourse?
Yeah, that is part of the premise use agreement policy, which is what they use to request these. And there is, you know, there is a liability, which, and they have to, you know, if it comes back broke, they're responsible for excessive wear. Now, the wear and tear is just the, just the small wear and tear of moving it on the road, bolts get loose, stuff like, but if it's broken, physically broken, because we inspect it before they go out, and we expect it to come back good. Those obvious repairs, yes.
But just overall wear and tear, you know, years of moving it around, that's going to be...
And in fairness, our community partners that have used it have been exceptional about it.
Yeah, they have.
The damage that we have to the one actually was within our own, within our own staff, because it just, it can happen at any time. So, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that...
But we are spending staff time getting, prepping them for departure and then receiving them.
You do have to do that.
Yeah, so that is spending, you know, taxpayer dollars.
And one thing that's different here is that most of these have been local community activities.
Yes.
This is a, I don't know if it's a commercial concern or exactly what they own.
Well, but it started, yeah, it started with the...
Cherry Festival, we use it there.
We use, yeah, we use it locally for the Cherry Festival. But it really, this really, this started with, it was the drags, which are in...
But this particular request is from an out-of-town.
Rodeo in Dallesport, right?
Right. They're, they go to different locations, and they're a traveling rodeo.
Another concern about this too is when they do the drag races, they have a place that's level asphalted. I don't know where they're planning on putting these. Do we know where the rodeo ground is that they're going to use over there?
No, it can't go on semi uneven ground because it does have legs which will level out, I mean, not extreme grades, but it does have to be perfectly flat.
So, we don't know where they're taking them at all?
Like, though we can find out.
That would be good to know.
But that's a good, a good question.
Okay, all right.
And just for the board's information, they're about $60,000 a copy.
And they stopped making those too, by the way. And the people who manufacture those stopped supporting it in the sense that they won't have their licensed people come out and do sort of license repairs on them anymore, because of the style of that clamshell type, they stopped making. And now, they make a different style. So, that's another consider as they wear out. It might be a purchase of a new one instead of trying to repair theirs.
So, do we, do we have a motion?
Well, I kind of made a motion, but now I'm regretting it.
Well, this is...
I don't remember you having a second.
I do, I think, we did have a second. Well, you seconded it.
Yes, yeah.
Did I? Okay, well, then, I don't remember. I might have.
I think, I mean, until we change the policy, you shouldn't, like, change the policy.
I think it's a policy question. I think it's a matter of equity now and how we used it before. So, I would recommend that you, you know...
So, can we maybe amend the motion and say that we need to, we will approve it this time with them getting $3 million?
I think it's a separate issue.
Yeah.
Okay, and then go back and visit the policy.
Keep it on your list of projects, I guess you're gonna say.
Our ever-growing list.
List of things to look at.
Okay, any other?
But we have never, this is the first time for these people.
Yes, correct.
And we don't really know, we don't have any track history, we don't have any history with that.
But we didn't have any, well.
We didn't, yeah, we didn't have any history with other.
With the drag races before they happened.
Ah, either. Okay.
Drag races are local.
They're what?
They're local.
They are local.
They are local.
And these people are not local?
No.
So what's the history of our equipment going into Washington? I mean, have we approved in the past?
Just the drag races.
The drag races. The drag races.
That's the fifteen mile radius.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So there's quite a bit of cross communication between states.
Yeah. And that's, and, and, you know, they've done a great job with.
Six to one. Did you, did you?
Yeah, I said yes.
Okay, I thought I saw your hand.
Don't remember seconding.
Okay, all right. Moving on. Out of state travel requests. Like we have quite a few different ones.
Yeah, lots of summer travel.
I think you can, yeah. Are you presenting for all of them?
Uh, well, if, if it's okay with, with you, I, I'll, I'll talk specifically about B and D.
B and D?
Yeah, action item B and D, those are specific to the high school.
Okay.
And then Sandy and I will all talk about the Avid trainees and those are C, E, and F. You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, action item B, that is just out of state travel to AP Summer Institute. Two teachers are going to do that in Vancouver. Anytime a teacher needs to, is going to teach a new advanced placement course, they have to go to that training. And so this year it's close by in Vancouver, so that is, that is Jim Taylor and Colby Ton. So, we was here last month, I think it was last month, talking about Mary Jo Comerford and Colby Ton going away in June to be readers for the AP program, so this is on the, kind of on the front end of that if you're going to teach it. And so the course that they're, we're adding, or changing, I guess, is human geography with a ninth grade advanced placement course. So, both are going to get, to get trained in that. So that is, that's what that is for, okay?
Okay.
You going to the next or wait?
Sure, I think you would like to potentially vote on that as a group.
As a group, okay. And then action item D, this is a travel to, as you saw, Penny Wallace retired. She was our yearbook director and so taking over that position is Eric Dorisat, he's one of our English teachers at the high school. So it's, it's, it's a pretty big job, it's an extra duty contract, but it's one you don't want to screw up. So, Walsworth is the company that we work with to produce our yearbook and so he's going up to Olympia, Washington. We're asking that he go up to Olympia, Washington to be trained by that company on how to produce, produce the yearbook, okay?
Okay.
And then the next three, C, E, and F, those are out of state travel for Avid. There's three different locations, we have a lot of people going. There's, there's one person in, in Seattle, which is the high school person. And then there's a high school, middle school group going to San Antonio and then a high school, middle school group going to San Diego. So, it's, it's sometimes hard to get all people that can go at the same, because there are different dates and so, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, for our second year to go to Summer Institute and be able to take so many more key staff members, it will just push our Avid school wide, not much bigger. So we'll have our two Avid classes, so our two teachers teaching that will be going to Summer Institute as well as their housemates and from every grade level is going and also every content level. So, this is, could be a huge summer of training so that we can bring it back to schoolwide in September, so I'm pretty excited.
And is, what you saw here today, that was they have an elective, those were the elective students that, and, and then of course the, the schoolwide piece is, you know, when you do those study skill type things, for example, do those in isolation in the school, they don't really stick. So you need to have a schoolwide implementation. So, what we're both trying to do is get, you know, the majority of all, especially our core content teachers trained in this. So this will be just one more step and I think this is our third, high school's third institute or third year, yeah, that we're going to, so.
Is this, is this being offered to all the teachers who want to do it, like voluntarily, or is this sort of part of their required professional development?
It is voluntary, I mean, it, it's, we're, we're encouraging them to go, but it's kind of the priority, at least for me, is, is really just starting one. We have elective teachers that are trained too, like CTE elective teachers and that kind of thing. But the priority really is our getting a hundred percent of our core definitely trained in this, yeah.
Yes, I put out an all call and there were many more people who wanted to go and to volunteer to go and then we found out when the dates were and so a couple people dropped out because their schedules didn't work. And then we really focused on the core, so everybody in core that wanted to go was able to go, so, yeah.
Is this the first training for you?
This is our second training.
Second training.
So our first training last year, we took a, a few people, we took six. And so we really launched it with the six staff members that went and, and so this year we're expanding. Now that they've seen a taste of Avid, because we've been doing some Avid schoolwide, we're expanding to those teachers that are interested in, in moving forwards.
So, how many are going this time?
For our team, there's, there's eight.
Eight?
From the middle school?
From the middle school, yes.
And I didn't count actually.
Total fourteen, it looks like.
But sixty district-wide after this count, about what I heard, sixty trained teachers?
Sixty trained, you have sixty percent of your.
Or sixty.
I think sixty percent of high school and so this would be probably about forty-five to fifty percent of our staff. All right, any other questions for? Anyone care to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. Action item B, C, D, E, and F, out of state travel requests to approve that. Second.
All right. Moved in seconded, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ballast? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You say it, okay. Was, G is yours too?
I guess G is mine too.
Okay.
If it's okay with you, I'll invite up Tom Peachey and Andrew Myers, they're, they're here probably, just introduce these gentlemen. I was given the privilege last year to begin serving on the scholarship board. I've been on there one year, which is thirty-three years less than Mr. Tom Peachey. And I reported that the scholarship night, that it grown from about eight hundred thousand dollar endowment to over, almost two million now. Almost two million dollars in ten years, so Tom has, has had a great deal to do with that. And last scholarship night, we gave out a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars to, to seniors at Dallas High School. And, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's been a great experience for me. So, what we're bringing to you, the board, is, Tom is unfortunately retiring from, or quitting.
I resign.
Resign.
Not in protest.
Okay. From the, as unanimous vote was no, you don't get to resign. From the scholarship board and, and then to, I'm just a member of the legal community and part of the bylaws is you have to have one member of the legal community. So, to replace him will be Andrew Myers. And this is Andrew and so we're, I'm recommending, or we're asking the board to approve this, this switch, basically, is what we're asking for, so.
Okay.
Very good.
I have something to say. I, I wish I'd have taken Avid a long time ago. I actually am a pretty good note taker, but had I been to the system of reviewing those notes as you described to you, how successful I would have been, how, we both would have been happy. So, the first thing I want to thank is, is to thank you and not you personally at all, I want to thank this board. Because back in nineteen eighty-six or five or something like that, they had the, the, the good fortune for me and they certainly took a chance to nominate me and place me on this board. And every once in a while in this life, you are given an opportunity to do something and that, you don't always, but every once in a while it does. They gave me an opportunity. They gave me an opportunity to be a part of an organization that goes out and raises money and Kurt's talked about it. It's just, there's substantially more money, millions of dollars in scholarships have been given. Personally, I've given my own scholarship now for probably ten or fifteen years because I couldn't stand that they're giving scholarships away without maybe pitching in a little bit of my own. My own estate planning's not your business, but it also has money in doubt for the, the school children in the Dals. And what you get from that is that opportunity to look at this remarkable group of students. And to the extent that you watch the news or watch TV and, and think we're losing a generation, then you get forty scholarship applications every year from, from just stars and it's just a thrill, it's just so impactful to be able to do that. Thank that, this board, I thank this board for that opportunity to do that. So, the thirty-four years on the board, the hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we gave this year, the success of this organization in every way is due to the generosity of this community and that's what it's all about. And there's one individual who, who doesn't like to be named and I won't name him, but from his generosity alone during my tenure, this scholarship fund will double within the next ten or twenty years. And it's just, that's remarkable to me. It's also the result of the excellence of the teachers. I am a, a forty-year resident of this community. I have had two children go through the entire process here and graduate from the, from them with just excellent teaching and, and they've gone on to great success in large part because of the support that they got from this school district and this organization. The administration has always been supportive and successful here and I really commend Candy for kind of carrying that on. And the school board. The school board has been in large part of supporting the administration and supporting the teachers and as a result, supporting those students. So, I am here to commend Andrew Myers to take my place on this board. Mandrew is, is shy, he probably would share all this stuff with you, but he's a graduate of Western Michigan.
Chickasaws or the Chimoas or whatever.
Broncos. Maybe that's Eastern Michigan. And Cal Western Law School in San Diego where Andrew graduated with honors. He's been in the bar for nine years, he's practiced in the Dallas about eight years. I think he's been with me, he's been my partner at Peachey Myers-Davies and Dunn now for five years and, and inspires me every day in my job. And what we do at our job is we have people that come in with crisis and, and crisis and we try to take situations that are not very good and we try to make them better and, and that's just, 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 it's a joy to be able to do that in a profession. And Andrew has been a huge part of sort of helping me be successful in that. He also has coached youth teams here in the, in the area and serves currently as our chamber president. And I couldn't think of anyone more qualified to take my place than Andrew Myers and he's promised me he'll give you thirty-four years. So anyway, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have kids in the district?
I do not, no. And I just, I don't have a lot to say after all that, but just I'm, I'm really looking forward to the opportunity. I, I absolutely value being, being interactive in the community and, and think that this is a great opportunity.
He does coach basketball. My son was on his team.
How'd we do?
All right.
Well, Tom, I wanted to thank you for your thirty-four years. We should have a, you know, big gift for you or a cake, but.
There's already.
That cake wasn't for me?
There's still leftovers, so. And thank you for growing the scholarship to where it's at, it's pretty amazing.
It's pretty thrilling.
Yeah.
All right, I'll say. Does that have an action item?
I'll make a motion. So, I made a motion to approve the appointment of Andrew Myers to the district scholarship committee.
I'll second that. Okay, moved in seconded. Any further discussion?
Can I, I'll just add one more thing, you'll find, so after the new board is in place, there'll be a request made at that point for a board member to be on the scholarship committee, you're going, so that will come, I think, after the first.
In Ju- July, or July, I mean.
Yeah. It's hope to be another, not so that will come down, so.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, we have a budget action item? Related action item?
Yeah, we received a, a small grant for multi-tiered system of supports, or actually to train, to coach. So, we need to adopt the resolution so we can appropriate one to be there.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution eighteen, nineteen, sixteen as presented.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You would be.
Any, any need for discussion on the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. School policies, second reading and board adoption, and adoption. So, we've seen these through first reading, does anybody have any questions or comments on, on any of these? We can approve them as a slate if we decide, if we choose, or maybe slate's not the right word, is that?
Approved.
Good enough. Yeah, we can, we can bundle these like you do in cable service. Okay, so, let me make sure. I don't think I have any questions either. All right, would anybody care to make a motion then?
I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt these policies that are bundled. In our package here.
All right.
Do you need more description than that?
Just A through, just A through B if you'll, if that way.
Second that?
All right. Any, any further deliberation? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. We are at the first readings, did you have any thing you wanted to discuss with us on?
You know, what, what happened on, the last time I asked to, you know, the administrative rule is, is the only one that I, I pulled from one of those and, and when I took it back and, and looked further, what I found was that there's one that, that has to do with hazing harassment, intimidation, bullying, menacing, cyberbullying on staff. And then there was another one that had to do with students and so they were out of sync. So I asked for Cindy to make sure that we move that one that had to do with the students so that we weren't more restrictive on staff, but we hadn't updated the students so that it made more sense to me. So now we're doing that and I'm okay with it, so.
So, I have a few things marked in this particular one.
Okay.
There's a couple of words that are, the, the wrong words were used.
Okay.
And so I marked those, but, and I'll give this to you when we're done.
Thank you, that would be great.
But there's a highlighted piece on page fifty-eight in, in brackets, which usually means we have to decide something?
Yes, and.
Age-appropriate and developmentally.
Yes. I'm not sure why that is.
So, so either you can, you can either leave it out so that it, so it would read, the district will provide literacy instruction to all students until graduation, or if you want to add age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate literacy instruction. And so it's just, it's just another.
I guess I have a question, couldn't those potentially be conflicting? Age-appropriate versus developmentally appropriate?
Age-appropriate and develop, well, you'd have to look at both, so in, in one case it might be age-appropriate, but not necessarily developmentally appropriate.
Not in either order, it's both.
It's and, yeah, so you have to have, thank you.
Okay, just wanted to understand.
Is it necessary to have that in there?
It's not necessary to have that in there, that's why it's there and highlighted.
Further clarifying.
If, if you want, as a board, if you want it further clarified that way, you, yeah.
Is there value to having it in there?
I don't believe, it, it, you know, I don't believe it's going to change anything that we're doing instructionally, so it's, it's up to the board. If you think that's important for it to be in the policy so that, you know, you and the public are, are, are clear about that, I'm fine with it.
So there's no particular recommendation?
Not, not on this particular piece, no.
So, we then actually do provide age-appropriate.
Absolutely, and developmentally and developmentally appropriate, absolutely, yes, yeah.
Feel like if you find it, leave it out.
Is that how, where we pretty much?
Chuck it?
Should we do that, okay.
The age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate, remove it and strike it.
I don't, I don't think anytime soon we would stop doing that.
Okay. So we can, we can take that out.
Is that okay with everybody?
All right, let me just make sure I didn't have another, that's all I had on, on that policy.
I missed that little bracket thing, too.
And I think everything I else I had was just wording.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Check this one. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, those are just proofreading. Okay. Um, is that all we have, and is there anything else?
Yeah, just, uh, everything else is informational, no other action items.
Okay, all right. I think, I think we can adjourn.
We can.
Thank you everyone for coming. I'm seeing through the log, log.